That Diane will be joining us shortly. I'm going to call the meeting to order and if you'll bear with me for just a second. Okay, please mute your microphones and rise so we for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. Madam Clerk, if you could call roll.
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Papin? I'll come back to her. Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gofos?
Here.
And Councilmember Papin, I don't see on the screen yet. I'll monitor and add her when she enters the room.
Great. If you have time, maybe recenter the link as well. At this time, I'm going to mention that we posted, along with the agenda, the ability for people to make public comment. Public comments that were received before 4:00 p.m. today, we received in writing and have been distributed to all council members. But you also have the opportunity to provide public comment during the meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the titles of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And could we acknowledge that Councilmember Papin is joining us, so we are ready to go?
Seven oh two. Got it. Thank you. Okay, Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number two, Merit Employees Salary Schedule Approval. Item number three, Basin's Two and Three Collection System Improvements Amendment. Item number four, Community Development Block Grant 2021 Annual Action Plan, Adoption and Community Participation Plan and 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan Amendments. Item number five, Emergency Rental Assistance Agreement. Item number six, Animal Control and Licensing Services Amendment. Item number seven, the Axon Body worn Camera and TASER Officer Safety Plan Bundle Agreement.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Is there any item on the agenda that a member of the council would like to pull? Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to pull? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, I don't believe we've received any communication to that effect.
I have none, sir.
So I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call roll.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
She's a yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gofos?
Yes.
That carries five zero.
Excellent. Now's the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to make comments on items that are not appearing on the agenda may make their public comment at this time. It's limited to 15 minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to share anything during public comment this evening?
I have some people who joined the participant list, but nobody raising their hand.
All right, we will have opportunities to comment on items that are on the agenda later on. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Old Business, Our Emergency Ordinance and Extending the Moratorium on Small Business Evictions. I will turn it over to our City Attorney, Sean Mace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am loading the slideshow. And can you see that now?
Yes, we can.
Great. So the purpose of this evening's agenda item is to allow an opportunity for the council to adopt an emergency ordinance extending the expiration date of the previously adopted small business eviction moratorium. In this presentation, I'll review the history of the small business eviction moratorium and then identify options for the council on the extension of the period for payment of deferred rent. So as you recall, in May, after the health officials issued the shelter in place orders, the City Council declared a local emergency and on the same day, the governor issued an order suspending state laws that might preempt local eviction moratoria until May 31st of this year. On March 23rd, the City Council did adopt a small eviction, small business eviction moratorium. And then the following week amended that moratorium ordinance to establish a March 31st, I'm sorry, May 31st expiration date. Tonight is the last scheduled meeting before that expiration of the moratorium ordinance. And at your meeting last week, the council directed me to bring back an ordinance that would extend that termination date. The ordinance provides for a six-month period that begins upon the lifting of the emergency for payment deferred during the emergency. And last week, the council also asked for options to extend this payment period. So in your packet, there are three different ordinances that provide three different options. The first ordinance would merely extend the expiration date to June 30th with no other substantive changes to the ordinance. The second option would extend the expiration date to June 30th and would amend the ordinance to provide for 12 months as opposed to six months to pay the deferred rent. And the third option would extend the expiration date to June 30th and amend the the period to pay back deferred rent to 12 months, but require that during the second half of that 12-month period, the tenant pay at least one half of the deferred rent paid on a monthly basis. In speaking with Councilmember Papin this afternoon, she expressed an interest in having clarification on the provision about that six-month period. And because of the seeming conflict between the language that the tenant must pay and then if they're then it also provides for an extension of that time. So I've added this language to indicate that unless the tenant's able to demonstrate that they're unable to pay, then they must pay. And so that would address that concern. Available for any questions, if you have any.
Sean, could you leave that language up, the amended language?
Sure.
Thanks.
Rick, did you have questions?
No, I'd like to hold on for a second. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question I can ask.
Go ahead, Eric.
Sean, I was just curious, have you heard from any businesses or any property owners? Either way, especially property owners, because I've actually spoken to several businesses, but not any property owners. I'm just curious what their take is on this.
I did have a conversation with one property owner probably about two weeks ago. And she indicated that the the whole program would enact a hardship on her. So she was opposed to the ordinance of any duration. I did mention to her that the, there is a hardship provision that's in the ordinance. So if she has a hardship caused by the ordinance, that she can make use of that process.
Okay, any other questions from council members? I don't see any public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I see people have joined the meeting. However, I do not have anyone with hands raised.
Thank you very much. So seeing no public comment. Yes, Sean?
Are you able to see the?
Yes.
Okay, great. Took me a while to get there, but.
No problem. And I appreciate very much Councilmember Papin's clarification and your explanation. So with that, I will bring you back to the council, close the public comment period and ask for a motion.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, we have three choices here. And as I understand, the first one, it just extends for 30 days, the moratorium. And then there'll be six months after that to pay the deferred rent.
Six months after the local emergency is ended. That's correct.
Excuse me, six months after. So the only adjustment we're making is initial 30 days on the moratorium on the eviction.
That's correct.
That one is the more modest of the two. We could always take it up again if need be, but I do have concern about the landlords as well. So I'm kind of leaning towards the first option. But I don't know where everybody else is.
Can you put up the options on the side, please?
Sure.
The side note.
There you go.
So the suggestion at this point is option one. Is that what you said? Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any? Yes, please, Rick.
Sure. I actually think I prefer option three. It's in the spirit of the fact that we're actually extending the moratorium at all, which is due to extremely difficult economic situation for both renters and landlords. And it provides a period of time. Now, number one, in order to be able to take advantage of this at all, the renter has to establish that they're unable to pay as a result of COVID-19. And given that result, and if the tenant has gone through six months of extremely difficult time, having the 12-month full-time to be able to pay and yet being required to pay in that last six months if they haven't paid all of it yet, you know, a payment to make sure they catch up and are fully paid by the end of the 12-month period, in my mind, is very prudent. Option two doesn't really lay out that kind of guidance. So I think option three is a very good choice because it meets the intention of what we discussed at the last meeting, at least what I think we discussed. And so that's my preference. Thank you.
I'll just restate that I think both of you have a preference to not go with option two. I think option two is not our preferred option.
Right.
But we're looking at one and three.
And I just want to say that originally I had been thinking about three, which is why I requested the change in the language. But then I started to get concerned that it might be tough on the landlords as well. But let's hear where everybody else is coming from.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, I actually also agree with Councilmember Bonilla on option number three. Because I kind of feel like that's kind of the middle ground. I really feel that six months might not be long enough. And I want to provide some extension, but I also, like, as I was explaining in the last meeting, I want to provide some sort of on-ramp to actually get it paid up in full so they can catch up. So I think that option three is just kind of the compromise in the middle that's saying that we're looking out for both interests here. And at the end of that time, hopefully, everything will be caught up and both the tenant and the landlord can get on with things. So that's probably my preferable option.
Councilmember Lee?
I would agree. And I think that the point that Councilmember Rodriguez made in the last meeting, which I think is very well reflected in option three, and then with Councilmember Papin's changes, I think that it will help a lot of businesses. And I think it is the middle ground in supporting, making the landlords whole and ensuring that they're that they're not left without a shirt either. So, you know, in talking to members of the DSMA, I feel like the consensus has been the longer that the shelter in place order goes on, the longer that they need to actually ramp up and restart their business. And with today being the first day that we can even do curbside sale, I just feel like, you know, taking into account how this has impacted businesses much longer than we even imagined. And then a lot of businesses haven't even tested out their reopening model, that it's better to be more prudent and that this way we ensure a repayment plan. So I'm definitely in favor of number three.
Rick, you still have your hand up?
I just raised it again. Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that I think this gives us a chance to meet the objective while ensuring that as many businesses downtown can be preserved as possible. I think it meets that end. Thank you.
Agreed. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve option three.
I'll second.
And would that include the modification?
Yes.
We have motion in a second.
That would be my modification.
Yes.
We have a motion.
We all like it.
Modification, yeah.
Whatever I can do to facilitate.
We have a motion and a second on the Papin plan.
Now I gotta vote for it.
Yeah, you do.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Yes, Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Gofos?
Yes.
Five zero.
Excellent, Sean. Thank you for the update and for those options. Moving on to the next item, item number nine, still in old business. This is our COVID update from our city manager. Drew, we can see your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. So this is this week's COVID-19 update. This is our ninth update. As you're probably aware, the health officer issued new orders late last week that were effective today, allowing additional businesses to operate. Retail stores can open under some restrictions, predominantly that they have direct access outside for curbside pickup. Limited low-contact services such as pet grooming and car washes are also available to operate as are office buildings. However, they're really restricted to only those who cannot work from home. In addition to that, there are additional allowed activities, including indoor and outdoor pools and outdoor recreation areas. However, the terms under which they can operate are very restricted. Really, they have to be actively monitored and managed to ensure that only members of the same household are using them or that all social distancing protocols can be enforced. So with that, we are looking at adjustments to our operations as a result of the new orders. So Parks and Recreation, they plan to open 10 tennis courts up sometime this week. There'll be reservation only at the Beresford and Central Courts. Summer camp planning is underway. Registration is available not only to essential workers, but to the general public as well. They're planning on utilizing nine park locations for the summer camps this year. The restrictions are that it requires a stable group of 12 or fewer children. So there can't be kids moving in and out of the groups. It's got to be 12 or fewer with no weekly signups. It's got to be a four-week period with the same group of children. And if you lose kids over the course of that time, you can't replace them. And no intermixing of the groups. The aquatics programs are still under review, seeing what we can offer, if anything, this summer. Planning for a limited opening of the Japanese Garden very soon. And Poplar Creek is now accepting reservations outside of San Mateo County residents. And it's my understanding that all tee times are continuing to be taken at Poplar Creek at this point. For the library, they're preparing for curbside service to library patrons for limited checkout of books and other materials. The initial phase, which they're hoping to get underway in early June for curbside service, will focus on the holds that were in place before the shelter in place order went underway. And then they would open that up to a wider audience as they, after they get through the first series of hold materials. Their summer learning programs are going to be all online this year with virtual programming, virtual programs continuing and free children's books distributed as part of curbside service. We are continuing to plan for a June 1st opening of City Hall. Even though we will be open to the public at that point, or planning to, we're going to have limited staffing on site. It's going to be focused on the folks who need to be here in order to get their jobs done. There are significant protocols that need to be in place in order to open up. I think we are well on our way to being there. But we are going to continue to keep as many folks home as possible who can do their jobs productively remotely. And then finally, on the operational update, we are collaborating with the neighboring school districts on a Make Some Noise for the Class of 2020 promotion. So on June 12th, from 7:00 to 7:15 p.m., residents are going to be encouraged to go outside their homes and make as much noise as they can to celebrate our local middle and high school graduates. The city has been working with the school districts on this and will be assisting with marketing and promotion of this event. On the restaurant reopening support efforts, we sent a survey out to about 200 restaurants. We had about a 20% response rate so far. So far, the respondents favored the use of sidewalks and parking spaces for outside dining. The full road closures did create some equity and logistical concerns. However, on Wednesday of this week, the task force will be meeting so they can hash these issues and determine how best we can support the restaurants and what their needs are in terms of being able to offer in restaurant and outside dining. I am planning on bringing a municipal code amendment to council on June 1st, which would allow for alcohol with the outdoor dining permit. And I'm also going to be recommending that we temporarily waive the $347 permit fee for the outdoor dining permit. As far as business support goes, we've made almost 1,400 calls through May 15th. We've completed childcare outreach. And we're starting kind of the next round of calls to professional service firms like accounting firms and law offices. As far as the business assistance grants go, we had 289 applications from San Mateo businesses. 14 of those have been awarded from the county's Measure K funds. Another 28 have been awarded from City of San Mateo funds, which leaves another approximately 19 and a half grants available, which 12 of those would be from the remaining city general funds that we put into the San Mateo County Strong Fund. And then another seven and a half from donations from foundations and private companies. So a lot of fundraising has been done to help support our community as well. Safe Streets Initiative, we've got Monte Diablo in Fremont implemented as of last week and being monitored and will make adjustments as needed. Bay Meadows has been operational for a couple of weeks now, and we've continued to make adjustments to that area through the end of last week. And then we've implemented no-touch pedestrian crossing signals. So the walk signals will automatically come on in these areas. And so with that, council confirmation, there's no confirmation necessary of actions taken between last week and this week. However, I am requesting confirmation for the actions that I'm planning to take, which is the municipal code amendment for the outdoor dining permit and then the waiver of the fee for that permit. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great job, Drew. That was a fantastic presentation. Thank you so much. I saw Eric raise his hand first. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you for the presentation, Drew. I have a question. On the Safe Streets, you know, we continue to get some feedback from Bay Meadows residents. And there just seems to be a disconnect between, I think, their expectations and what we're providing. And I'm just wondering if your take on what's going on and also would it make sense for us as a council to discuss that again? Just to make sure we're all on the same page, because I think we kind of quickly went through it and everybody got in there. Everybody left that meeting thinking Safe Streets, but everybody had a different idea of what that meant.
Yeah, certainly. So I can explain, I think, from staff's perspective, what we were trying to accomplish and how it related to kind of what we thought council's vision of this was. And then if we need to come back to discuss some adjustments, we're certainly happy to do that. I think some of the, I think one of the key concerns from some of the Bay Meadows constituents is in relation to the placement of some of the signage and barricades, particularly on 28th. Those are where we have the streets closed to through traffic signage up. And ours does not take up the entire right lane of traffic. It's a little bit out from the curb, but it doesn't take up the entire lane. We felt like that that just creates, if you take up the entire lane, the way I know some other cities have done it, that it does create a situation where you've got potentially cars with a greater probability of having conflict with one another. And so we pushed it over a little closer to the curb, but it's still, I don't know if you've been out there and seen it, it still is certainly visible from our perspective. I think the bigger issue is not so much the placement of the sign, it's the intent of the program. I think from our perspective, we picked locations that supported multifamily housing and were on sort of, like, especially with the case of like 28th Avenue and Monte Diablo, those are collector's streets. And our intent was not to encourage people to recreate in the streets. Our intent was to allow for sort of the shared use of that space, given the unique circumstances and the need for people who are biking and are walking and are jogging to be able to have appropriate levels of social distancing when there's a conflict between two people on the sidewalk and someone can perhaps move out into the road if they're walking to get around someone at a safe social distance. And so I think the program that we tried to implement is really, again, trying to just slow the traffic down and letting people know and having people realize that there's going to be more people out and that you may, as a motorist, encounter a pedestrian or bicyclist in the street. And in the case of a pedestrian, maybe somewhere where they wouldn't normally be under other circumstances. But we weren't certainly encouraging folks to actively recreate on the street.
Just in terms of, so yeah, it seems like we kind of propose or approve slow streets, but the expectations are some, in some neighborhoods, it's not slow streets, it's like no cars on the street. So people can recreate and do whatever. So is there any, like, what are the, if we wanted to make it more recreational focus and less slow and or really slow it down to a halt? I mean, I'm not necessarily advocating for that because I don't know the trade-offs. But should we have that discussion or is it, I mean, is there any reason why we just don't close down the streets to residents that live on the streets and make other people go around?
I think it's, it becomes a bit of a challenge for enforcement in terms of, I mean, ideally, a no, a road closed to through traffic means that only people who live there are going to be on the street. Difficult to enforce. I think, you know, the other thing we're trying to contend with is the deliveries and ensuring that the deliveries can get made. But I think the point is really, to me, and certainly Brad or anyone in Public Works can chime in on this. But for me, I think if we want to create a street that we're going to actively encourage people to recreate on, I think we want to close it altogether, which creates a different set of challenges in terms of people getting to and from their residences and people getting deliveries to their residences. So that was a concern on our part. And overcoming that if we were to close the street outright.
Can I ask a question? So I've heard a lot of the Bay Meadows folks and in the Bicycle Coalition folks referring to the Redwood City model and the Oakland model and their signage. And so I understand that there's sort of a, we're operating a little bit in a gray area. But are their models somehow inapplicable or inappropriate to those locations? I guess I just, I'm having trouble understanding how they're striking that balance and why it's a challenge for us in that location.
So I'll ask Brad to jump in here, because I know that he's talked with the folks in Redwood City about their program.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Brad Underwood, Public Works Director. I did reach out to the person in charge of that effort in Redwood City. And she indicated that while they chose residential streets, purely residential streets and streets that had a low volume on them. So that's a bit of a difference in what Drew described you about what we've done is look for the the housing issue that we try to do, you know, the transit oriented development and other multifamily housing. And we chose. And we chose streets that a couple of them are actually collector streets, so higher volume streets. So much easier to actually block the lane and what they do is they really block the through lanes on the right hand side as you enter the street. And so you've really got to go in the opposite direction in the street. So, you know, if we had that on residential streets, I would feel probably a little more comfortable. I'm just concerned about liability with streets that are more heavily traveled. So for instance, in in Bay Meadows, if they wanted to do this on like Bays Road instead of 28th Avenue, you know, I think we could probably, you know, do some different accommodation there. So I think that's the the major differences. You know, we we've just chosen not to, you know, probably put the city at a little bit higher liability issue on on these streets that we've chosen to 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 put out there.
Is it as simple as just choosing different streets? I mean, why, I mean, I would I would assume that the selection of streets should be for the intended use, not select the streets and then figure out the best way to keep them safe.
Yeah, Councilmember Rodriguez, we had actually chosen streets other than 28th and Bay Meadows, and they insisted on having 28th. So that that was a bit of a challenge to us. We'd rather have Bays and I think there's another parallel street to that. I can't remember the name of it offhand that that we felt would 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 be better suited for this. Again, I think the challenge is there's a lot of people that park there in front of their homes and so you're going to still have traffic in there, maybe not as heavy because it's just residents really that live on there, but then you have the delivery issue as well. But I think that's the biggest the biggest challenge is, you know, they they had wanted the 28th Avenue to be to be the street. And so we accommodated their desire for that. And so we're we're adjusting, you know, the layout based upon what we feel is best for that type of street. I mean, I will say for for me, I've been out there a few times and I I've I've most of the time when I'm out there and I've been out there different times of days, I'm kind of the only car on the street. So I'm not really, you know, I think what we're doing is working. I think people are staying out the street. And then, you know, of course, we have the the new crossings across the street where we have the R F B where they can push the button and and the flashing lights go on. And so there's there's some good safety measures out there.
I was gonna have a follow up question if with about the issue of liability. So Sean, was that factored in in terms of like, how how was our liability evaluated for for the program and sort of different models of implementation?
I was not consulted. I'm not sure if somebody else in the office was consulted about potential liability with the measures that were taken on the streets. So I can't answer the question.
Yeah, let me chime in there. We didn't consult with the attorney's office. That's just based off of my experience in in the in the field of traffic engineering and and others on my staff that you know, when you eliminate through traffic in one lane and force cars to go head on at each other, it it puts a risk out there for the city.
I have my hand up, Mr. Mayor.
I'm getting to you right now, Rick.
Thank you.
Councilmember Benia.
Thank you. In looking at this originally, when I saw the streets that were selected, I kind of wondered about why they were, you know, more traveled streets. And and yet I held back because I thought, well, if everybody likes it and you've spoken with the neighborhoods, like you said, then we'll give it a try. But I still always had my doubts about that. And right now, seeing the context from Kelly Moran's letter and that there has been a period of time where this has been, you know, attempted to work. And then looking at what Oakland and Redwood City have been able to do, it's my thinking that we should probably go for, like, like you suggested, Brad, the less traveled and quieter streets. And I think it would be smart if, for instance, Bay Meadows really wanted to have places that are fully recreational, they should use those other streets. And I think 28th is not the right street for that kind of setting. And like you said, we've installed the flashing safety lights to get across 28th. If people want to go to the park, I think it is safe. But I don't think it's safe to just block that street. I'm I'm looking at the map right now and I know because I drive through there sometimes. It's a street that you use to get places. And so I think to take that off the map for cars and just say that, no, you can't drive there, even temporarily is a tough thing. So like you suggested, what what are there? Bays and Derby? There's also the Linear Park running through there, which is one way on one side and the other way on the other side. Those areas could be perfect, right? So I think we should suggest that we change it. Also, I'm concerned I heard other concerns about Fremont, where Third and Fourth continue to be heavily traveled streets for cars coming off of the freeway at Third Avenue and turning right on, you know, going towards Second, heading north on Fremont, or turning left and heading down into Central on Fremont. It seems to me like you can, if you want to stick with that heavily traveled of a street, there are other quieter streets in both of those neighborhoods, by the way, that would be better suited to this use. But if you want to stick with those that street, then you should you should not include from Second to Fifth so that people can make the movements they need to move and get their cars where they're trying to go without running into these things. Because when you come off a Third Avenue and you're heading west, when you're and you're thinking you're going to turn on Second Avenue, turn right on Fremont, you don't know that you can't turn right there until you get there and then you're in the right turn only lane, right? So there's kind of a conflict there. So those are my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I'm going to public comment now. Do we have any public comment on this item? I see two hands. I see I'm going to go to Adam Lorraine first. Mr. Lorraine, please unmute yourself. Go ahead. And then I'll go to Michael Weinauer.
Okay, it's S. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Adam.
Thank you very much to the city clerk and all who make this possible. Good evening, council and staff. I appreciate very much this discussion that's being held right now, particularly on safe and slow streets. I thought I'd mentioned my own personal experiences, which I feel essentially mirror pretty much exactly what Councilmember Bonilla just said. Because I'm in North Central and doing the North Central Central piece. I've I've enjoyed it. I've appreciated it and I appreciate the intent. I will say that so far, and we'll see what Michael has to say on the subject, but I feel like on the central side, which would be south of Fourth, I guess, to Councilmember Benia's point, the that section of Fremont seems a little better suited and and less traveled. And the signage remains in the places where we would hope they would be. And and overall, it's it's quite a comfortable experience and it kind of ends there on on 10th anyway. So it feels more residential, quieter, and I I don't feel pressured at all. And it feels like it it seems to be achieving the intent. On the North Central side, not so much, based on what Councilmember Bonilla said. And so I think the discussion so far has been good and I I would support those council members who are currently leaning toward potentially pursuing streets that could be closed outright. And if they're more residential, quieter streets that could be closed outright to take a step farther in into this idea and pilot. I think overall, that would probably serve the people of San Mateo better. Probably more than, you know, serving the drivers as well as those who are looking for a place to recreate safely. So just wanted to issue my support of that. Thank you.
Adam, thank you very much. Now we're going to go to Michael Weinauer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I largely echo what Councilman Bonilla said and what Mr. Lorraine said in that my experience, I'm first of all, I think this is a fabulous idea. I'm really glad that you guys are trying this out, understanding that there's kinks to be worked out and there's pluses and minuses and whatnot. But I think Fremont is a little problematic through our neighborhoods for all the reasons that Councilman Bonilla stated. I'd like to see us go more like lean into this more and look at streets where we could close them off because I think there is a disconnect between what people are hoping for and maybe what would they would like to do and what the reality is. And the what I see, I live on Fourth near Fremont, so and I pay close, very close attention to it. I'm out on my bike, running and stuff all the time. And that connection between Third and Fourth is a disaster. And people just, they ignore it. I got behind a guy this morning, he looked at the sign, turned left anyway, right? And and I give people the business, you know, and and give them a hard time when I when I see him or try to wave them off. But the reality is there's just, you know, whether they're ignorant of it or in this case, they're they're not, they just don't care. I think we have to provide some kind of mechanism to to either make them not able to do that or, you know, clear it out so there isn't a miscommunication and a problem. I would prefer the former where you take that out as an option for people, remove that and let people go around Eldorado. If they're going the speed limit, they can react, put a no turn sign up there a couple, you know, 20, 30 yards, 50 yards before the the street and people will learn and adapt. But anyway, I don't want to ramble on for too long. This is kind of off the cuff. But I I do appreciate you guys doing this and but I think there could be improvements to it that would make it a better program for the whole city.
Great comments. Thank you so much, Michael Weinauer. I don't see any other hands from people who are currently attendees going back to the council now. Rick, I see your hand is up again. Before I get to you, I want I I want to make sure I want to make sure, Brad, that you're hearing that people love this program and that it is successful and people want it to be more successful. And we're just tinkering around the edges here to to make it safer and better. But it's an overwhelming success and people really appreciate what you're doing. So we'll continue to work with you.
Right, by all means, you know, it's a learning experience for all of us, something new, right? So we if the council's interested in us making contact with those neighborhoods and the leadership there and and talking about different locations, we're happy to do so.
Rick, what do you got?
I just wanted to add that, you know, Kelly made a point and sent pictures and everything else about the signage. And I heard Brad and Drew your your discussion on that. I do think that once we settle into other quieter streets that will be safer, we should actually locate the signage similar to what I saw in Redwood City where it's very clear, okay, that as you go to think about making this turn, that it's strongly suggested that unless you live there or you're delivering there, you shouldn't be there, right? And I don't I think that if you don't put the sign there where they have to read it, they're not going to look at it, okay? They're just going to drive on down and think, whatever it is, I don't know. Street's open. I can see it's open. So.
Yeah, again, I I don't disagree with you. It's just a different type of street. And so I think we'd feel a lot more comfortable with streets that have less volume on them.
Agreed. Thank you.
So I want to, okay, go ahead. Eric, you had another comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I I think perhaps the the best way forward is to look with the end in mind. And if 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 the end goal is to recreate in the streets, then have the city choose what street it is and choose the less traffic one and and make this program great. It might require a little bit more than tinker around the edges. It might be picking completely different streets and just closing them off. But I I think that's the direction that I've been hearing that residents are most interested in. And this is a unique opportunity where we could try it. So I I think we should go for it.
Councilmember Lee.
So I, you know, I just wanted to throw out the caveat that my my understanding is that the Bay Meadows folks are not interested in a full closure of a street. And that, you know, that going in this direction could 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 unearth a whole nother set of concerns about parking and other things. And so I guess I I just I I feel like there's some more conversations to be had to make sure that that there is full buy in and alignment on expectations and and sort of a implementation plan and design that people can get behind. Because I just I would really hate for us to send staff down a whole nother road thinking that this is the right one and then and then have it it kind of open a new can of worms. And and just on a good note, I I want to commend staff. I was biking down and my kids were biking and I was running down Monte Diablo and it was fantastic. And and there were cars on the road and we made room for each other and it was an overall great experience. And I've been up and down Monte Diablo a number of times. So yeah, there's a lot of good that's happening here and and it's really appreciated. So I want to make sure that that's that message lands also.
Excellent. Thank you for those comments. So I wanted to pull back for just a second because we we lost sight of what agenda item we're on, I think, for a second. We we really drilled down on the traffic piece. Drew, you're asking for us to approve your your course of action on the outdoor restaurants and waiving the fee. You also brought up something coming up for schools on June 12th. We're doing a big school thing. I just want to take this opportunity to mention that ordinarily, about this time of year, we'd be recognizing all the 4.0 students. I'm reaching out to the principals to to do some kind of Zoom recognition for those 4.0 students. If any other council members are interested in participating in that, let me know offline. Drew, have we given you direction? If not, we need to give you direction. Council, does anybody object to waiving the fees for outdoor dining? I believe it's a $347 fee. Anyone objected that? No, we all support that. That's a great idea. Drew, please bring that back to us. Thank you. And then go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just I want to just circle back to the the safe streets really quickly, just to make sure that there's consensus.
That's where I was going.
Okay.
Go ahead. The consensus, I don't I don't know that there is. Go ahead.
Okay, so so what I think I heard was that there was obviously consensus to make some adjustments. But I want to be clear, if if there's if there's the interest in making adjustments to to the point at which we are going to encourage recreating in the streets. And if that's the case, we would be, I think, moving some, if not all of these locations onto onto more residential streets and then providing the the barricades more in the in the center of the road.
That was what I thought I heard people saying. Bay Meadows sent the photographs and they spoke about that. And so I think that, you know, confirm with them that's what they want and then look for the right streets.
I heard something a little bit more nuanced. There's a safety issue on Fremont. If we could address that safety issue on Fremont, that that's something I think a little simpler to solve in Bay Meadows. I have to be honest, I was confused the first couple of times that I read the email. Having gone to Bay Meadows several times over the last couple of weeks, I thought it worked really well. I think everybody who I've talked to thought that it was working really well. But in reading the some of the emails that we received, they want the signage moved slightly. I don't even know how much they want the signage moved. It it's not clear to me that they want to switch the streets entirely. Perhaps we could just perhaps we could just direct staff to work with the Bay Meadows neighborhood and ask them to to put the signs where where they're being requested and see how that works. And nothing more than than that. Is that is that a simple enough thing to to ask staff to do during this week and then report back next week on how that works out? Diane had a hand up and a question or comment. Go ahead, Diane.
Well, I think that with Bay Meadows, there seems to be this kind of moving target, if you'll excuse the pun. But it seems like there are busier streets that they would like more restricted. And then what I hear the council saying is there are less busy streets that they would like, if there's one, you know, full closure. What I heard Councilmember Bonilla saying is if you want full closure, consider some less traveled streets. And if you still want to deal with streets like 38th, that's not going to entail closing off because, as Councilwoman Bonilla said, that might not be the safest thing to do. But maybe as the mayor is suggesting, you're moving the signs just a little. And but there should be that expectation. This is not a street closure. So you want to be careful that people don't just go out in the street thinking, I got my street closure and then we caused some safety. I'm worried about the safety part of it. So I have some confusion. I'm hearing three different things.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead. Councilmember Benia.
I didn't hear them asking for a street closure. What they said was they want cars limited better. They want the signs moved over so that and the photo is very clear. If you look at the photo they sent from Redwood City, they wanted to actually block the the lane that you would turn. They wanted to actually block the, the lane that you would turn onto a street into. Okay. So then if you want to go on that street, because you live there or you're delivering there, you can go around the sign. But you have to go into the oncoming traffic site to do it. They want to be able to recreate in the streets. That's, that's what they said very clearly. They want to skate. They want to use scooters. They want to, you know, they want to be out there in the street because they feel like the sidewalk, which is thin there. In Bay Meadows, they have small sidewalks. Okay. And, um, they want that space. So that's all. And that's all I have to say. Thanks. Drew, did we clear that up for you at all?
Uh, I see Brad shaking his head, but.
I had understood that Councilmember Mania was saying, look for less populated streets.
Yeah. I, I, I will, uh, go ahead, Councilmember.
Yep, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I, I was just going to throw in, I, I think, ah, well, this is, there, there may be too many cooks in the kitchen here. I think that we need to treat every neighborhood differently. We need to see what their goals are. And then staff needs to put together the plan choosing the street. Uh, I don't really feel that the neighborhood should be choosing, like, all these different things. They're not necessarily experts in this. And, um, you know, we might get it wrong. But, but if, if like we went to Bay Meadows, we went to North Central and say, like, what are your goals on here? Do you want just, you know, not fully closed down the streets, but, but just slow them down? Do you want to be able to recreate in the streets? Pick all those notes and then, uh, and then put together the plan that we won't, like, if we're, if we're controlling everything, we be in the city, then we'll be fully accountable. Cause right now, like, nobody's accountable because it's like, oh, well, this person said this, this person said that. And I think that's part of the problem we have here.
I, I'd feel more comfortable with that approach as well. So finding out their, um, desires, what they want to get out of the program. Because some neighborhoods might be feel it differently, but if they want to recreate in the street, then we look for those streets in their area that, that are going to provide them that and, and then set them up accordingly.
I'm good with that.
I'm comfortable leaving it there. I appreciate your flexibility and, um, uh, I'm sure we'll have more conversations about this in upcoming weeks. And our goal is to, to make people safe and to make them happy and to give them the opportunity to walk around each other and, and do it safely. So, uh, Drew, do you have all the direction you need on this item?
I do. Thank you.
Then we're, we're going to move on to new business. Um, we're on item number 10 at this point, which is the metrics for local transportation analysis for new development. And we have a presentation from our principal transportation planner, Sue Ellen Atkinson. Sue Ellen, I see your video is all lit up. Welcome. And your presentation is on our screen. Thank you so much.
All right, there we go. Um, okay. Mayor Gothel's council members, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, Sue Ellen Atkinson, I'm the principal transportation planner with the Public Works Department. And I'm here tonight for metrics for local transportation analysis for new development. And more specifically, the use of level of service and vehicle miles traveled. So tonight, what we'll be going over, um, is really split into two parts. The first is discussing local transportation analysis, um, which involves an overview of level of service versus vehicle miles traveled, um, implementation of the local transportation analysis, a look at what some local jurisdictions are considering, and then options for councils review. The second portion of the discussion is, um, around the Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, guidelines for analysis, um, specifically the screening criteria, thresholds for significance and the mixed use analysis. And, um, that is all related to analysis for vehicle miles traveled under CEQA. So first, just a quick refresher, um, we came before you a few months ago with, um, informational item about vehicle miles traveled. So, um, just a reminder of the level of service, um, is what the city is current, has, um, historically used for transportation analysis. And that's a vehicle focused metric. It assesses, um, congestion and vehicle delay and mitigations for any LOS impacts were typically, um, things that increase roadway capacity, like roadway widening, signalization changes, intersection modifications. Um, as of July 1st, 2020, uh, California jurisdictions are required to do transportation analysis under CEQA using vehicle miles traveled. Um, the city is currently applying OPR guidelines to do this analysis. So we are meeting that requirement already. Um, the requirement is through State Bill, um, 743, SB 743, which aims to reduce greenhouse gas, gas emissions through trip reduction. Um, vehicle miles traveled is a metric that's more focused on multimodal transportation, getting people spread out among modes. Um, so any impacts under vehicle miles traveled, um, is more multimodal in nature. And typically, um, transportation demand management measures that encourage the use of other modes like transit, walking or bicycling. Um, so as discussed, SB 743 requires all California cities, um, jurisdictions to utilize vehicle miles traveled, VMT, for any transportation analysis under CEQA by July 1st, 2020. The city is currently utilizing OPR guidelines with, um, projects that are currently in the pipeline. Um, in the interim timeframe between now and when the city specific policy is adopted, which is anticipated to be in the summer. Um, however, since the CEQA transportation analysis will be conducted utilizing VMT, mitigations under CEQA would only address impacts, um, due to increases in VMT. Um, cities may require improvements outside of CEQA to offset any effects on level of service if they conduct a separate local transportation analysis. Um, SB 743 only requires VMT for CEQA analysis. It does not govern what, um, metric is utilized for local transportation analysis. And so we can do one analysis to satisfy the CEQA requirements and then do a local transportation analysis to further assess what the effects are on our local roadway network. Um, so in our current general plan, general, general plan 2030, the circulation element is based on level of service. Um, we have a policy that sets a certain standard for level of service and a separate policy, um, within the same section that states that development projects may be required to fund off-site circulation improvements if the project generated traffic does not meet that set threshold. Um, and that is based on a determination of significant impact under CEQA. So right now, our general plan, um, and the impetus behind requiring any development project to provide off-site circulation improvements is tied to CEQA. Um, so with CEQA now based on VMT, findings of significant impacts utilizing LOS are not possible anymore. Uh, and further, the nexus for the city's, uh, transportation impact fee or TIF, um, is also to the general plan LOS standards. So what does that mean for the city, um, right now? What we're looking at is sort of a three-pronged approach, um, in order to, um, get the city in compliance with SB 743, conduct, um, complete a city specific policy and then further actions. So in the short term, what we'd like to discuss tonight, um, is modifications to our local transportation analysis to utilize LOS in a way that meets the city council goals. Um, this would require an amendment to the general plan to remove links between LOS and CEQA. Um, so the requirements in the general plan to, um, require off-site development would no longer be based on CEQA language like significance or impact. Um, and that would provide the ability for the city to require any off-site improvements that may be necessary um, due to effects on the transportation network from projects that would not be mitigated, um, under CEQA using VMT mitigations. Um, in the short term, this meets the goals of the development process, um, under the CEQA analysis. If a project is screened out, which we'll discuss in more detail later, um, the project does have a very streamlined CEQA process. They don't have to do transportation analysis if they're screened out. Um, however, this, um, during the transportation, local transportation analysis and modifying our general plan, um, helps the city meet their housing goals in terms of building new development. Um, and also it helps to, um, meet city council goals in terms of congestion and our traffic action plans. So following the adoption of our city specific VMT policy, which again is coming later this summer, um, the city, city staff would then go into the medium term, um, where we would evaluate our current transportation impact fee to identify potential updates, um, including Nexus and including the projects that are identified in the TIF. At the same time, we would explore alternative structures for the TIF, um, such as different fees or different projects that are required in certain areas of the city, such as the TOD area. Um, so within the TOD area, for example, the fee may be different, or it may go to fund different projects, like ones that are more focused on bicycle and pedestrian access. Um, once city staff has identified any potential modifications, we would return to city council with options for consideration. And then in the longer term, um, we do have the general plan 2040 process that is ongoing right now. Um, and through those community conversations and the development of the circulation element for the new general plan, staff proposes to evaluate alternate transportation analysis metrics, um, that may be included in the circulation element. So whereas general plan 2030 has LOS as our local transportation metric, um, we may want to evaluate other metrics such as travel time or multimodal LOS or something of, um, an alternate nature that might serve the city's needs better in the future. Um, so sit, staff would like the opportunity to evaluate those options as part of the general plan process. Um, so looking at local jurisdictions, we have not found local jurisdictions that are not maintaining LOS in some capacity, um, moving forward. So we looked at four specific examples, Redwood City, Mountain View, San Jose and Palo Alto. Um, all are requiring projects to conduct a local transportation analysis in addition to the CEQA transportation analysis. The local analysis is utilizing LOS, um, in many cases. Um, the LOS analysis is conducted in a smaller geographic area. Um, so what that means is right now, um, or previous to VMT, when we had a project come in, we would do a very extensive LOS analysis of all of the intersections and all, all of the roadways that could be impacted. Um, that was very costly, very time consuming, but we wanted to ensure that we had a clear idea of all of the potential project impacts. Um, so in doing a local transportation analysis using a smaller geographical area for LOS, uh, these cities are really focusing in on project access and circulation and narrowing down that, um, LOS analysis. So city staff evaluated four short-term options for our local transportation analysis. The first is to maintain existing practices, um, which is that large-scale LOS analysis for all areas that may see adverse effects. Um, again, it is top costly and time consuming, um, but it does identify any location where there may be adverse effects. The second option, um, is to maintain LOS, but in the reduced capacity, similar to the, um, other jurisdictions I just mentioned. Um, so that ensures that the analysis correlates to project access and project size. Um, and it reduces the potential, um, cost for development projects in terms of off-site improvements, because we're looking at fewer areas. The third option would be to exempt projects within our transit oriented development or TOD areas, um, from LOS analysis. Uh, this would further streamline the transportation analysis projects for process, I'm sorry, for projects within this area. Um, however, it may not fully represent the effects of projects in our TOD area on the roadway network. So if we're not conducting an LOS analysis for those projects, we may not know the effects that they will have on our roadway network. And the fourth option is to remove LOS entirely as a transportation network at this time, um, rather than in the future. Uh, however, that would, um, create an issue where assessing consistency with our current general plan, um, would not be feasible. And we potentially would not be able to assess the TIF on those projects. Um, so in evaluation, uh, staff's recommendation for the short term, um, for local transportation analysis would be option two, which does cut down, um, on the area where we're conducting analysis, but still gives us an idea of a project's effects on the local roadway. So now shifting gears, um, into CEQA transportation analysis using VMT. Um, as I mentioned, um, OPR, the off, state office of planning and research, um, they published a 2018 technical advisory that gave guidance on how to implement, um, VMT, because this was new for every single California jurisdiction. Um, they, part of that, of that recommendation was screening criteria. Um, and this, uh, set, this, um, this gave an assessment on types of projects, um, that are presumed to have a less than significant VMT impact and thereby would be screened out of, um, CEQA transportation analysis and not have to do that analysis. Um, so those are small projects, um, projects that are located near high-quality transit and affordable housing projects. Um, small projects by OPR defined as fewer than 110 trips per day. Um, that is the area where we're seeing the most differentiation in jurisdictions that have gone before us in, um, in creating city specific policies. Some have increased or decreased the number of trips, or some have made small projects based on project size. Um, projects located within a half mile of a major transit stop, for us, that's Caltrain or high-quality transit corridor, for us, that's the ECR route for Samtrans, um, would also be screened out. And then 100% affordable residential development in infill areas is also considered screened out. Um, so in this interim timeframe before our city specific policy is adopted, we're utilizing the OPR guidelines, um, in processing and applying transportation analysis. We do request city council feedback on these criteria, um, in light of our upcoming city specific policy. The other areas of the OPR guidelines of note are thresholds of significance. Um, so that is what is considered a significant impact in terms of VMT. They've broken it out into land use categories of residential, office and retail. Um, for residential and office, they've noted that a number of, uh, VMT 15% below the regional average per person, um, or for office per employee, um, anything over that is considered significant. And then for retail, a project is assessed to ensure that there's no net increase in VMT in the study area. If there is, it's considered a significant impact. Uh, mixed use projects, the guidance is to analyze land uses separately, um, or the project's dominant use only. And then there's also information and guidance based on the type of assessment, trip-based or tour-based. And trip-based is assessments that include, um, or that assess individual trips to and from the project site. Um, and tour-based is the full trip, um, from home and back, including the project site. So until we adopt the city policy, bless you, um, OPR has provided these guidelines. And this is what we're using in the interim again, until our city policy is available. Um, any comments from city council members, um, on these items can be incorporated into our city specific policy. Um, and we'll use that in the very near future as we're developing that policy. So discussion items tonight, um, is evaluating option, the options for short-term transportation analysis using LOS. And again, staff's recommendation is option two, um, which is LOS in a reduced capacity. We're asking for city council concurrence on the use of the OPR guidelines and thresholds for VMT analysis under CEQA, um, in the interim time period until the city policy is adopted. And then we're also asking for any feedback on those OPR recommendations that we can incorporate into our upcoming city specific policy. Uh, so that completes the presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Sue Ellen, would you go back to the last slide and would you, would you tell me the downside of option three?
Um, for option three, which is, um, exempting projects that are within our TOD areas, that would mean that for those projects, we are quite likely not doing VMT analysis because they're likely screened out, um, if not all. And then if we are not conducting the LOS analysis, we won't have information on the effects of the project on our local roadway. Um, while projects in the TOD area are more heavily reliant on transit, walking and biking, um, there are still vehicles that are associated with that project. And there may be adverse effects on our roadways, um, that may require improvements, um, in order to operate properly. If we don't have the LOS information for those roadways, we have no way of requiring those improvements.
That was a really great answer. I, I, I did not know the answer, but that was a really great answer. Um, obviously option four would not allow us to collect TIF funding. And so we would lose money that we would otherwise be using to improve the neighborhood. And option one is status quo and would not. And option one is status quo and would not allow us to use VMT hardly at all.
Correct.
Excellent. Other questions from?
Sorry, VMT would still be done under SEQA.
Okay, but only when required by SEQA?
When required, correct.
And we feel like this is a, VMT is a tool that could be utilized more broadly, and that's what we want to do, and that's why you're recommending two.
No, this is for the local transportation analysis outside of SEQA. So we have to conduct transportation analysis using VMT if required under SEQA unless the project is screened out. This is for our local analysis to affect local impacts and require any off-site improvements over and above collection of the TIF.
Got it. We have another question from council member Papp.
Yes, I think getting, if I just may dovetail on what you were just, the topic you were just on, the difference between one and two is that one requires a very broad analysis, and we're trying to kind of narrow our analysis down. So it gives people a chance to assess LOS in sort of the more immediate area. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just had a couple of questions on the VMT and SEQA and the screening-out criteria. So you haven't made a recommendation, right, of whether or not we define small projects as perhaps being based upon square footage or something like that? That might be something we take up later. Is that right, Sue Ellen?
That's correct. We are evaluating that currently. I actually just got a memo on that from our consultant for the policy today. We've had brief discussions, and the feedback is the trips per day is easy for the industry to understand, for transportation engineers and planners to understand. Project size, number of units, or square footage makes more sense to the development community. So we are still determining our recommendation in terms of either-or. There's a possibility of the lesser of the two, but we will be back to you with recommendations and looking for feedback.
Okay, I got you. So then I had one more question on the next paragraph of your report. When we're talking about high-quality transit and using that screening criteria, you say the presumption that a project near high-quality transit does not result in vehicle mile child's impact does not apply if the project or location-specific information indicates the project will still generate significant levels of VMT. And so when you're talking about project or location-specific information, I was wondering, did you mean if a project was bigger, it might still have significant VMT impact?
Our understanding is that OPR provides that stipulation in the event that there's information available about the project that leads staff to believe that there would still be a VMT impact. It's not necessarily project size because you could have a large project that is implementing a high number of TDM measures already, and that's expected to reduce their number of trips. So it wouldn't be as direct a correlation as that, but for example, type of project, or if the area, if the access to transit is impacted or something of that nature. So it's something very specific that makes it clear that the VMT impact may not be less than significant.
Okay, okay. And then I was just wondering, you mentioned El Camino was falling within a high-quality transit district. Would the bus route along Alameda de las Pogas, that doesn't fall into that category?
No, the guidance that we've received from SAM Trans is that only the ECR route maintains a headway of 15 minutes or less. That means a wait time in between buses of 15 minutes or less during normal service, not currently. But we don't have any other bus routes within San Mateo that they've identified that meet that criteria.
I got you. I got you. Okay, I think that was it. I spent a lot of time with this report. It was very involved, but I appreciate all the.
I know.
That's the nature of the beast. So I appreciate the time that you've taken to educate us.
Any other questions from council before we go to public comment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a public comment. I see a hand raised. Adam Lorraine, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Tess, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, council. And again, to city clerk, I'm getting the hang of this. This is going to work out. All right. I just want to give an opinion as a resident who is in favor in general of the shift to VMT as opposed to LOS, that I would suggest to the council, please not pick option one, and that if it is going to pick option two or any option that continues to use LOS, it should be definitely with a short-term framework in mind. Only that time necessary to make the city-specific plan and adjustments to the TIF and other language within the overall framework necessary so that we can start adopting VMT-based policies going forward, ideally as soon as possible. Because that is, in fact, I believe, the intent of the Senate bill that has passed, and it will be ultimately to the benefit of the people of the city of San Mateo and to our general planning. I think I'll leave it there. Thank you.
I was muted. I don't know how that happened. Let me go back. Adam, your hand is still up, but we got to you already. Did you have more public comment?
That's all right.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. I see that council member Benia has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Sue Ellen, thank you very much for this report and all of the work that I know is going into this right now. It is a very detailed set of facts here we're being asked to weigh in on. And I'm looking specifically right now on something. I think council member Pappin might have weighed in on it. It's the part where it says, however the presumption that a project near high-quality transit does not result in a VMT impact does not apply if project or location-specific information indicates the project will still generate significant levels of VMT. Thinking about that, I don't know how much we need to worry about that because people don't live here and then commute back to the East Bay in general. Most people don't. Most people that live here, if they commute by car, don't go much farther than San Francisco or San Jose. Is that considered significant level of VMT?
I think that would be determined by the project-specific VMT analysis. And again, that exemption or stipulation really comes into play if there's knowledge about the project that would make the screening out under SEQA. Not ideal if it's expected that there's going to be a significant VMT impact. So without knowing more characteristics, I'm not certain if I could respond to that fully, but that stipulation is in place to give option in case that screening criteria does not necessarily apply.
Well, let me get a little more specific. For instance, if something at a bridge point were demolished and a new use proposed. And let's say it's not retail, maybe it's office or residential, right? In that case, it's different from the regional draw of the retail. But the fact is, residents may drive as far north or south as San Francisco or San Jose. And if it's an office building, it may draw people from those areas. So would that, in your mind, still require additional scrutiny?
I believe that a project at Bridge Point would be outside of a half-mile from a major transit stop or high-quality transit.
That's what I said, right.
So that, then it would not be screened out under that criteria.
Okay.
So the full SEQA VMT analysis would be conducted.
But if it were someplace within the transit corridor, it would be within transit, and it then would be different, seen differently.
We would have to make that determination based on the specific criteria of the project.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're on mute again, Mr. Mayor.
I am. It keeps doing that. Any other council members want to chime in? I'm going to ask Sue Ellen to go back to her page that spells out the feedback that we are providing at this point. Thank you, Sue Ellen. Okay. So is there anyone who objects to option two? I heard consensus on option two. As far as the OPR guidelines and the thresholds for VMT analysis, is there anyone who does not agree with the concurrence or the use of the OPR guidelines? See no objection to that, so we're all on board. There's consensus. And lastly, on the OPR recommendations for the upcoming city-specific policy, any council members have a comment or objection to Sue Ellen's recommendation here? No. Okay, Sue Ellen, it's a clean sweep. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for the presentation and good luck. We appreciate it.
Well done.
All right. That was item number 10. We're moving on to items 11 and 12. And if, if I'm not mistaken, I think it makes more sense to do item 12 before item 11. What's the, do people agree with that generally? I see heads nodding. Okay, so based on our consensus, I'm going to go to item number 12 first then. Sean and Patrice, with regards to item number 12, this is the ministerial duty of placing, of calling the election and placing a measure on the ballot, correct?
That is correct. And I had a presentation that I would like to make, if I can figure out how to make it. Okay, can you see that?
We see it.
So the purpose of this item is to give the council the opportunity to adopt resolutions calling for the general municipal election for November 3, 2020. In this presentation, I'll review the matters that would be placed on the ballot and then review actions that are included in the resolutions and tee up a policy decision that the council must make about what's included in the ballot pamphlet. So there are two purposes for the November election. One is to elect council members to the seats currently held by council members Pappin and Lee. Then the other is to conduct an election on an initiative proposed by the group identified as Samitans for Responsive Government, or SMRG. Brief recap of the history of the SMRG measure, the group gathered signatures and submitted their petition in 2018. County Elections Department confirmed that the petition was signed by the sufficient number of registered voters to qualify for the next general municipal election, which is this year, November 20. And as the mayor mentioned, the council now has a ministerial duty to place that measure on the ballot. You have three resolutions in your packet. Attachment one is a resolution that calls for the election for the two council seats. The resolution requests consolidation of this municipal election with the statewide election and requests the county to conduct the election services. It also authorizes the city clerk to sign a contract with the county for the county to provide those services. The second attachment to the second resolution calls for the election on the SMRG initiative measure, again, requests consolidation and for the county to conduct the election and authorizes the clerk to sign the contract with county election services. And section four provides that the text of the measure will not be included in the voter information pamphlet and may be viewed on the city website. Attachment three calls the election on the measure, does the same things except for in section four, it provides that the text of the measure will be included in the voter pamphlet. So for the policy decision for the council to make is whether the text of the measure should be included in the ballot measure. In addition, I did receive a call from a member of the public who raised an issue about whether rental, the word rental from the last line of the title of the resolutions, this would be resolution either two or three, should be removed because the policies and the general plan that would be maintained if those measures are adopted apply to all residential units in addition to this rental. I would agree and remove the word rental from the last line of the title of those resolutions. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sean, can you remind me, I believe it's 10% of registered voters that need to be, they need to sign a petition to put a ballot measure on, is that correct?
That's right.
And so in this, in this instance, smrg, according to the Elections Office at least, had 5,500 or so signatures that were verified by the Elections Office?
That's right.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing no questions, we'll go to public comment. We have two hands. Two hands. I'll go to, I believe, Leora Ross's hand was raised first. Leora, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
This is Leora Temocov Ross from the Housing Leadership Council. I wish you all could have seen how relieved I was when I saw this was only audio and not visual. I am calling in to say thank you so much for putting this on the ballot, exactly the right thing that needs to happen. And, you know, there's been a lot of misinformation, a lot of conversation about this measure, and we can't wait to get it started. We would also like to see a competing measure similar to the one that we supported before but was kind of killed by the COVID-19. A measure that would allow us to build a vibrant downtown and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by building housing taller and denser near transit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your public comment. That's, the alternative measure's not on the agenda tonight, so we're not going to talk about it. Michael Weinauer, you're the next speaker. You are unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Gothel, members of the council. It is no surprise that tonight you'll decide whether you wish to take a position against Measure P. The council has long made it clear that they are not fans of allowing the people to make land use and development decisions. Extending Measure P certainly helps to keep the power in the hands of the people, the very reason why its parent measure was created in the first place. We urge you to take a neutral position on the extension of Measure P rather than encumber it with any biases. The mayor and deputy mayor point to what they say would be a stifling of the general plan process by extending Measure P. This concern is highly specious, as it certainly did no such thing during the GP process in either '97 or 2010. A critical flaw in their assurance that the council will not change any zoning between now and the completion of the updated general plan is that it is in no way legally binding. It is a decision which could be changed at any given council meeting, three votes, and boom, it's done. The only true binding assurance would be an extension of Measure P. Mayor Gothel said the Measure P extension is outdated and has the same language as when it first proposed. I'd remind the mayor that Measure P improved upon its predecessor, Measure H, and the proposed extension of Measure P was updated to comply with new state regulations like AB 1505. Additionally, the measure increased the council's flexibility to up the amount of affordable housing it requires. So let's be clear, the lack of BMR units is not attributable to Measure P, but due to inaction for 25 years by the council to focus on this need. Additionally, they failed to implement a commercial linkage fee as recommended by both Measures H and P as early as 1991. Had they done this, perhaps tens, if not hundreds of thousands of affordable housing dollars could have been procured. The deputy mayor voiced his concern about RENA numbers and followed with the thinking that denser construction would then need to occur increasingly in our neighborhoods. The threat to single-family homes at this point is questionable. The threat to single-family homes at this point is questionable based on an extreme unknown, COVID-19. We know RENA numbers relate to jobs in a given city. These numbers are based upon assumptions about jobs and today no one can say where we will be with our jobs population. People sheltering in place and forced to work from home have learned, along with their employers, that working remotely can be successfully accomplished. Twitter and Today Square indicated they would permanently allow remote workers, while Peninsula Behemis, Facebook and Google continue to extend their remote work orders through and beyond 2020. Our future quote-unquote "need" is going to be turned upside down as employees find freedom in moving wherever they wish, as many will continue to work remotely. It will almost certainly change the need for commercial development, which will therefore impact our RENA numbers. Sacramento is already rethinking the RENA approach, especially in its punitive aspects. We should not be basing concerns about Measure P on something which is already getting pushback and is sure to see changes in the future. Smurg has always supported the general plan update as the place to make future land use recommendations. The extension of Measure P merely assures the status quo until the revisions are complete in 2024 and can then be voted on by the electorate. We urge the city council to let the people decide freely. The right thing to do tonight is to take a neutral position on the extension of Measure P. Thank you.
Great, any other public comments? I don't see any other hands at this time. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Again, this is just for placing it on the ballot, I'm going to open it up for public comment again when we vote on taking a position. So Sean, how many options did you say we have?
So there's a one issue that you need to resolve and that is as to whether the full text of the measure ought to be included in the voter pamphlet. If, historically, that has been done, the clerk and I checked some of the more recent measures, including Measure G, I think was the most recent one, or Q rather. And, and the full text of the ballot measure itself was included in the voter information pamphlet. It's not legally required to do it that way and it's, and this measure has several pages, so the council does have the option of, in the resolution indicating that there'll be a link to the city's website rather than including all that material on the voter pamphlet. But it's totally a policy call for the council.
Is there a cost?
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is. An attachment in your staff report was an estimate from the County Elections Department. It's kind of hard to ascertain exactly the cost for a measure. We know there's 12 pages in the way the initiative measure, the language, which is an Exhibit A to both of the proposed resolutions. It will be reduced inside the ballot pamphlet, it won't be 12 pages, but we're estimating and talking with the County Elections Department that somewhere between 16,000 to 20,000, if we choose to print.
Okay. Counsel, I see Eric has his hand up, go ahead, Eric.
Yes, I was just curious, Sean, if, if Smurg or anyone else has commented on, on this, on including the full text or not? Because it seems my inclination that if it's been done in the past and it's providing more information than not, that it's probably a good idea. I'm also very cost-conscious at this time, but I'm just curious, is it just, we're just making this call right now or has any outreach been done?
I have not heard any preference from anyone, one way or the other.
Can you give us some context, Madam Clerk, about the overall cost of placing things on the ballot versus the incremental cost of adding these pages?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can. So, I believe it's your attachment four in the staff report gives the guesstimate from the County Elections Office. So they're saying with a five-page measure, it's probably somewhere in the range of $2.71 per registered voter, that's $2.71, to $3.25. If it, there's more pages involved, it's somewhere in the range of $2.92 to $3.50 per registered voter. Again, these are guesstimates, we know that this is going to be a big election. There are cost savings because the expenses are shifted across multiple jurisdictions that we will realize, but we do know that our, in presidential elections, our registration goes up quite high. And right now, these are based on our current registration, which is around 58,000. And we probably will get quite a few more on there. So the general cost is somewhere between 166,800 to 216,000 is the estimate from the county.
Okay, okay, so, and are you, is that figure just for this measure or is that figure for everything that could go on the ballot for the city of San Mateo?
That's everything that would go on the ballot.
Okay, so we are talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars and the incremental cost for putting all of the language would be approximately 20,000 on the high end.
Somewhere in there, yes.
Okay, so that should give us context for this next part of our conversation. What is the will of the council? I see a hand from Councilmember Benia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that in the interest of full public disclosure and not appearing to perhaps be hiding any information for $20,000, we should include the full text as it was written by the Smurg group on the ballot, in the, in the ballot voting information.
Understood, and, and I appreciate that. And, of course, we will also put it on the website, is that, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we always put all texts and measures on our website.
So both, belt and suspenders. Is what is recommended by Councilmember Benia? Anyone who agrees or disagrees with that inclination? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Councilmember Benia in that it is, this is so important for the city of San Mateo either way. I know some voters rely on reading every word of their packet. I think it's, it's a, it's a steep cost, but I think it's worth it.
Okay, any other council members want to chime in?
I agree.
Yeah, and we have to be guided by transparency in this instance, so I would concur with where everybody is on it.
Great, okay.
That would be a motion to approve Resolution Attachment Three when you get to that.
That's where we are, okay.
You don't have to approve number one.
Who would like? Who would like to make that motion, are we there?
I'll make a motion to approve Attachment Three.
And I'll second.
Are you taking them one by one? You could do it in one motion, Attachment One and Attachment Three.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Attachment One and Attachment Three.
And I'll second.
That's calling the election.
We have a motion in a second, Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor, Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan.
Aye.
Councilmember Benia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Gothel.
Aye.
Carries five zero.
Okay, so that was item 12. Now we'll go and backtrack to item number 11. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez and I met as an ad hoc committee to decide if and what recommendation we were going to provide to the city council. There's a very brief report in, in the, that you received in your packet that that the council has prioritized that residents have their voices heard and that the general plan process does that very well and that the general plan process would be stifled if, if we had this measure pass. And so we want all residents' voices to be heard, residents' voices to be heard. And that is our recommendation. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, do you have anything to add to that?
I have some concluding comments, nothing to add.
Okay, are there questions from the council on our recommendation that we take a position as a council to oppose this ballot measure? No questions, I'll go to the public comments. I see Leora Tamarco Ross has a comment, go ahead, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, council, again, I just want to express HLC's support of the subcommittee's recommendation. This, this proposal, this measure, really hamstrings the council and your ability to make decisions. And as you pointed out, it also hamstrings the general plan. Yeah, that's basically all I have to say, thank you.
No problem, thank you for your comments. Any other public comment at this time? I see no other hands, I see no other public comment. I see one, okay. Jordan Grimes, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening, council, thank you as always for your time. Just want to join Leora and strongly support the recommendation of the ad hoc subcommittee to oppose Measure P. God, there are numerous reasons. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the report that was put together of the comments by Mayor Gothel, by Deputy Mayor Rodriguez. But the reality of this is, we've got, closing in on 110,000 citizens, residents of San Mateo, and there's something like 52,000 registered voters in the city. If we really want to get as much input, as much diverse input as possible, I think the general plan update is the way to go. I think Measure P absolutely, I know Smurg feels differently, but I cannot imagine the heightened density limits are going to be the biggest point of contention among the general plan update. I can't imagine how you have that update with that cornerstone, with that piece already settled. So again, I strongly support the council's, excuse me, the subcommittee's recommendation to oppose the measure tonight. It was bad public policy in 1991, it's still bad public policy. Thank you very much.
Okay, last call for public comment on this item. Seeing no more hands raised, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for final comments. Any council members want to give final comments? I'll go first, I'll go first. So, I believe that the, the general plan process is critical. I think that the general plan process is allowing for people's voices to be heard. I think that we need to hear from as many and as broad a group of residents of San Mateo as we possibly can. I don't know that heights and densities will be increased, but it will entirely be up to the residents of San Mateo and that's where it should be, through the most robust process possible. And that's, that's why I believe in the general plan process. And I think we've got a taste of it during the, during the survey. This afternoon at 5:30, we saw that when you include as many people as possible, you get a much better understanding of where people's heads are at. So those are my thoughts, that's why I agree with the recommendation of our subcommittee. Other, any other, Councilmember Pappan, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would probably dovetail on the latter part of your comments there. You know, tonight we heard the results of a survey conducted with nearly 1,300 San Mateo residents and what they feel our priorities should be. And I want to thank everyone who participated in that process. I think your views are critical to our planning and our vision. I think that input tells us that folks value a small-town atmosphere and way of life, but I also feel that it was made clear we weren't providing enough housing for middle and low-income families. And I feel, you know, that we can and we must strive to reach both of those goals. And I think we can maintain our community's character while ensuring that future generations can afford to live and work here. And because these principles and goals need more thoughtful and community-based planning, I join in the ad hoc committee's recommendation in voting to oppose Measure P. As its passage to me reflects that it may prematurely foreclose on options to achieve this community vision. So I will be joining in that vote.
Other council members who have, I see a hand here from Councilmember Benia. You're still muted, I'm sorry, Rick.
Let me withdraw that hand for a minute.
Okay, okay. Would anyone else like to go? Go ahead, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I have a lot of respect for the members of Smurg. I consider several of its leaders to be very close friends of mine and I know that they all care very deeply for our community. And when it comes to extending Measure P and how best to maintain San Mateo's quality of life, I do feel that reasonable minds can disagree on that best path forward. State mandates are going to require that we zone for more, zone for significant increases in density and we are going to have to focus that density somewhere in our city. At this point, keeping the status quo is just not going to be an option we have. That's the way I see it, and I know there's some that disagree with that. So, the question in my mind is, is, should this increased density, where should it be prioritized? Where can we zone for new housing such that it minimizes the impact of quality of life? Traffic congestion, neighborhood parking shortages, maintaining open space, et cetera. Would it be better to spread it out, spread the increased density all throughout our entire city? Perhaps away from transit and into single-family neighborhoods? Or would there be less impact if we concentrate that density in a few areas near transit? From the results of the survey that we just heard earlier this evening, our entire community is divided on that question, on those questions right there. We are currently engaged in a once-in-a-decade comprehensive general plan process to study, to help us study these questions and more. And I just want to go back to some of the comments that Mr. Weinauer made. We, we've done these, these general plan updates in the past, but the one we're attempting to do right now is, is 10 times more thorough than anything we've attempted before. I've, I've talked with city employees who are working on it and they said that in the past, it's been kind of just a, like just something you just kind of do. You just kind of, you know, vote on it, okay, we're going to keep the same thing, we move forward. But I think that we're trying to do something very different here. So, I think that, why I believe that this is the best path forward is because I do not think we should start taking off, options off the table right now while we're in this process. And make no mistake about it, if Measure P passes, it will be, at the very least, by definition, it would restrict density options. For example, if our community wanted to leave heights entirely as they currently are, but just increase density for 100% affordable projects, we would be unable to do that. And so that's affecting our options that we have. You know, the letter that we received from Smurg this morning correctly points out that COVID-19 crisis could drastically affect our housing needs and maybe our assigned RENA targets, as employers increasingly allow workers to work at home. I agree with that. The general plan process should give us at least eight months, maybe two, two years, to gather more information as the crisis is long-term effects on demand of housing take shape. That's more time we would get to make sure that we're making the right decisions here. I know that there's a lot of mistrust between the proponents of extending Measure P in this council, I see it, I understand it. However, I do take this council at its word that we commit to not changing any density or height zoning until the general plan process is complete. And if any of us break that commitment, then I would actively encourage the electorate to vote those members out of office. I agree with the proponents of Measure P that voters should and will ultimately make the decision and I commit to accepting the will of the voters, whatever that outcome may be in November, and try my best and try to help this council make that direction work, whatever it may be. But at this time, however, I just do not think extending Measure P is the best path forward for San Mateo. So that's why I'm going to be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I see- And I see Councilmember Lee. You have your hand up. Go ahead.
Well said. For everyone who's who's chimed in already, I I first want to applaud the thoughtfulness and the effort of the of the subcommittee members, Mayor Gothel and Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, and for your comments. And this was not an easy process. And and many of us hold relationships with 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 the the architects of of Measure P and the proponents of Measure P, and and it's very challenging to have, you know, to have disagreements like this that run so deep. And I, for me, coming coming through this process as a as a general plan subcommittee member, I I really do believe that that we can trust each other and we can trust the public to come to come to the right decisions that will serve all San Mateans and that will really work to strike a balance that that is right for San Mateo. And and I think that at the core of this issue, it does come down to trust. And 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 that's and I want to be on the side of putting my faith and my trust in the people of of San Mateo to to direct and lead the general plan process. And and I think that that is the process that will will take us forward. And and I have to agree with with my council members in in opposing Measure P and supporting the recommendation because I I I believe that that Measure P actually works against what most San Mateans actually do want. And I had a very interesting conversation today with with our own Senator Jerry Hill, who was one of the original authors of Measure H, the 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 measure that preceded Measure P. And and he he had some very interesting insights, and his thoughts has have really evolved on this issue. And and one of the things that he said is that that there was a time and there was a need for Measure P 30 years ago. But that this initiative really reflects the needs of the community 30 years ago. And and he made a really good point about needing to trust an open process and community dialogue. And and the other point being that fixing ourselves and freezing ourselves in time is actually a way of holding ourselves back and and effectively moving backwards. And and I think that the task at hand is really to evolve with the changing demographics and and economy and the transportation needs of the 21st century. And and that there have been unintended consequences to to ballot box legislation. And we have a legitimate and a very meaningful and robust community process in this in the general plan efforts that I I I believe that we can confidently put our faith in, and so can the community. And it comes down to, do we choose to trust each other to come to the right decisions and to the right solutions? And and my answer is yes, we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Benia?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Of course, first, I concur with all the comments that I've heard from all my fellow council members. Want to add a little bit, being the only member of this council who has actually been engaged in this city on questions of land use and development for 25 years now, I have a kind of a longer point of view, and I'm not going to go into all that history. But what I can say is that, of course, we can know people, and they're entitled to their opinions and their beliefs. And I've I've struggled with those things for over these many years because I've never really agreed with these height and density-limiting measures. And in fact, when I look at Bay Meadows, I really lament the fact that we could have had more there. It's such a beautiful neighborhood. It's so well done. It could have been done better. So with that said, I really feel that it is in the best interest of the people to continue with a very robust general plan update process. I am myself a member of the General Plan Update Subcommittee, and I intend to hear the input, the feedback, all of the thoughts, and give full consideration, honestly, and without any, any sort of, you know, countervailing, you know, thoughts. I mean, I want to hear and get the true word of the people. And I believe what was just said about looking in the rearview mirror. We are far into the 21st century now, and yet we're not building for the 21st century, in my opinion. I believe that we can do much better. We will only get there, though, through a robust general plan update process. So those are my reasons for also recommending the opposition of this measure. Thank you.
I want to bring us back to a couple of reminders. This SMURG measure, the measure that's been proposed by San Mateans for whatever it is, it's it's not going to be Measure P on the ballot. It will be assigned a different letter. So we all have to be patient and wait and figure out what the letter is that will be assigned by the Elections Office on the ballot. So we will all be changing our language here soon enough. Also, there was some mention that there's there's an alternative measure. We're not here to talk about that tonight. I believe that the the general plan itself is is the alternative contemplated by the city council tonight. We have carved out study areas, very limited, very limited transit-oriented development, carve-outs near transit that would hopefully reduce traffic. And the general plan is not proposing to study single-family neighborhoods or changing the character of single-family neighborhoods. Those things, I think, are all important to me, but they help me, and it really boils down to this. I trust the residents. I trust the people who live in San Mateo to make the decisions for San Mateo, and that's why I want to give them the power through the general plan process to decide the future of San Mateo. And I think anybody who trusts the residents would believe in that general plan process. Would anyone like to make a motion? I will make the motion that we adopt the the recommendation of the subcommittee, which is to oppose the measure proposed by SMURG.
I'll second.
We have motion, second. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gothel, or Mayor Gothel? Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Benia?
Yes.
Carries five zero.
We are on to reports and announcements at this time. Any reports and announcements from the city manager?
No, not at this time, thanks.
We gave you enough opportunities already, I think. I think you've told us everything that could possibly be going on, and you're doing a great job. Keep doing it. Any previously, I mentioned some reports and announcements about how ordinarily we recognize the 4.0 students at all the high schools in San Mateo, and I'm committed to trying to do that in a virtual format, and anyone who wants to participate is welcome. Rick, you had your hand up?
Thank you. In my position with the Peninsula Clean Energy, we are looking at a pilot program that we're going to be starting, and we're going to run over a period of a few years, $6 million to work hand in hand with the ReachCoast, the Green ReachCoast, that we've been working on here in all the cities up and down the peninsula, to help incentivize and put in place full electrification of homes. So if people are interested in that, they can look on the PCE website, and there will be an opportunity there. We're not quite ready, but there will be an opportunity there to seek to have heat pump technology in your house to heat your water and your space. And it's a good way to cut down greenhouse gas emissions and work on slowing down sea level-wise and all the other things that come with it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
When you say full electrification, part of what you're talking about, Rick, is is eliminating fossil fuels from the home like natural gas. Is that right?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Pappen, you had?
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update on the express lanes, and I serve on the JPA for the express lanes. So we are well underway, as I'm sure many people have noticed, driving up and down 101, the corridor there with the K rails going in. And San Mateo, our Public Works Department has been really helping to work with the JPA to get out the word about the construction that's going to happen here, including the taking down for some time of our sound walls along 101. So we just thank the public for its patience, and I want to thank Public Works for helping keep those lines of communications open during the construction process. We will have made the decision to open the southern corridor south of Whipple to the Santa Clara County line first, and so that should happen in fall of 2021. And we ended up to, looks like from the first phase, we'll have an extra $4 million left over, which will be applied to the northern phase. So stay tuned for all things Express Lane.
Great update. Thank you so much, Councilmember Pappen. I do have a question for our finance director. Do you, Rich, do you do you know if there's any way that I could enter into a licensing agreement for that pomp and circumstance that I heard? Is that something that can be worked out?
For revenue generation for the city, yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Rich. Anybody who doesn't know, Rich, Rich on his tuba has a fantastic rendition of pomp and circumstance that I hope to share with the graduates and the 4.0 students. So thank you all for a great meeting. Have a great rest of your week. I appreciate it. Good night, everybody.
Thank you all.